I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to come out of executive session. Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is certification of closed session pursuant to subsection 2.2, 3712b of the Federal Virginia 1950 as amended. Each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to best of their knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirement shall state so prior to the vote indicating substance of that departure and his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe that it was a departure that has taken place? Being none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Andrew Hensley.
Yes.
Tara Dye.
Yes.
David Eaton.
Yes.
Steve Breeding.
Yes.
Rebecca Dye.
Yes.
Nate Kaiser.
Yes.
Lou Ann Wallace.
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to return to regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. At this time, I will ask that you take back over for our organizational meeting, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing that's up before the board right now is the Russell County Board of Supervisors Chairman election. I'd like to open the floor for nominations of the Russell County 2024 Russell County Board of Supervisor Chairman.
Mr. Lester, I'd like to nominate Steve Breeding to that position, please.
Is there any other nominations?
I said all nominations be closed, please.
I'll say it. All in favor?
Aye.
All nominations for the Russell County Board of Supervisors is now closed. Let's do a show of hands since there's only one nominee. All for Steve Breeding for the Board of Supervisors, 2024 Chairman. All raise hands. Save a no. Congratulations, Steve Breeding, as to Russell County.[183.12][183.12](APPLAUSE).
The standard is congratulations or a condolment.[192.37][192.37](LAUGHTER).
You said it.
Moving right along. Next item on the agenda is the election of Vice Chair, so I'll open up the floor for nominations of Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate David Eaton, please.
David Eaton nominated. Are there other nominations?
I move all nominations cease.
Have a second.
Second.
And the second, the nomination cease and Mr. Eaton be elected by acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There are none. Next, we have the selection of the Clerk of the Board, and historically, it's always been the county administrator. So I'll entertain a motion for Mr. Lester to be named Clerk of the Court, Clerk of the Board. I'm sorry, Katie, where are you at?[249.51][249.51](LAUGHTER). Uh-oh. He didn't have to run for election.
I'm sure he was saying Clerk of the Court.
Want to put him over, or what?
I move that Mr. Alonzo Lester be elected as the Clerk of the Board and the Deputy Clerk, please.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likes and? There aren't any. And I understand that you want to carry the appointment of the Deputy Clerk over to next.
Till appealed. Yes, sir.
Next is the adoption of Robert's Rules of Order. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to accept Robert's Rules of Order. And then have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likes and? There aren't any. Okay, now, we come to the adoption of the county bylaws. So we'll need a motion to accept the bylaws and a second.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second to accept the bylaws as they're presented. Any discussion?
Have there been any changes, Mr. Lester?
No, ma'am.
I would urge all board members to take these bylaws home with you and sit down. They need desperately to be upgraded and to modernize. Don't you think, Mr. Lester?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
They do. We need to change those things. So let's try to bring those back to, if you can get them into Mr. Lester, and maybe he can compile all the comments, and we'll look at it next board meeting. But I think it's, we're desperate to get those things changed. Okay, now, the time to set the regular.
We need a vote. We need a vote, Mr. Chair. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, there are none. Time to set the regular meeting schedule for the Board of Supervisors in 2024.
Been the same frame, same time.
Steve, I'd like to make a motion that we move our meetings to Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. for convenience of the public and for those of us who actually have nine-to-five jobs and work.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There's no discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Stephen, make a clarification, real quick.
Okay.
First Saturday of the month.
First Saturday of the month. Any further discussion?
Okay. I'd like to have a discussion, please. I understand where you're coming from on this, but how much more is this going to cost the county for us to have another day? And is that a normal thing that we see? And what does the rest of the board feel about this? I understand, Mr. Kaiser, I understand your position. I do understand that you knew that the board was meeting on certain days when you took the position, and so I would not be in favor of this at all.
Further discussion? Yeah, I would say that the hours are no different than the hours we're spending right now. This is after hours. Mr. Lester was here all day working. So we're after hours there, and so the hours will be no different. And when elected, not appointed or placed here, but elected by the people, it's our job as the board to decide what's best. And so it's a majority, and I respect your disagreement, but we will decide that now.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let me go back and see this. All in favor of this motion, raise your hand. All opposed? Two. This motion carries. So the meeting boards, the board meeting dates will be 9:00 a.m. Saturday, the first Saturday morning each month. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of amendments for the December 11th, 2023 meeting. I think this is one the old board members will have to approve. This one. It's a board meeting. Yeah, that was never said. I was a bitch. Yeah. Again, I still, we need to approve the 24, 25 board budget meeting schedule, which is carried in your packet. Need a motion to approve that schedule and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Have the motion and a second.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, have the motion and a second. Okay, discussion on this matter.
So is this going to be a two-member board, or is this going to be all of us for these meetings?
This will have to be a two-member board until we change the bylaws, bylaw specifications to two members. So we were in violation of bylaws last year.
I think you could do that, Mr. Chair.
That changing bylaws again. Am I correct, sir? Yeah.
I mean, I, that's one reason, that's one reason I want to change those bylaws, because I think everybody does need to be a part of the budget. But right now, if we've accepted the bylaws, we're restricted to two members.
So you're already changing the board meetings of the next board meeting. Terry and I were sitting here discussing, so we can go ahead and include all these changes into the new bylaws.
Correct.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likes and? There aren't any. Okay, now we come to the approval of the minutes. And again, this is for December the 11th, 2023. I think our four, all of board members can approve this. So I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes. I might add that, did you get the corrected minutes out there?
Yes, sir. It's in the packet. I'll make a motion.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the December 11th, 2023 corrected minutes. Discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who wish to abstain?
Aye.
So all the new members are abstaining. Now, we have come to the approval of our expenditures. To consider the expenditures that were included in your packet, if you had an opportunity to look at them. Just now's the time to ask questions about it. I think Mr. Lester probably passed, or you go, did you pass out a sheet with all the codes?
I'm still consolidating, sir. I'm down to 47 pages.
I know. I had to do it long ago. At any rate, Mr. Lester will get everybody a copy of that cheat sheet that shows all the codes. It'll make it a little bit easier for you to review those, but we need to go ahead and, I'll entertain a motion to approve these payments.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Now's the time to ask questions if you've got concerns or questions about any items on those spreadsheets.
And until then, if you're looking through it later, I'll be glad to answer any questions, because everything we got is documented, documented, documented.
Okay, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likes and? There aren't any. Okay, now we need to approve the authorized payments. There is a list there that some of the routine operational payments need to be approved, pre-approved, so that we won't cut our electricity and our phones off.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to authorize these prepayments. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likes and? There aren't any. Okay. Now we've come down to the committee appointments. The first one up here is the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Executive. So I'll open up, entertain motions for placement on that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to nominate yourself, Steve Breeding, to this board as concurrent with term, please. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Lou Ann Wallace.
Myself, Ms. Wallace nominated.
I'll nominate David Eaton.
Two positions here. Should we do one position at a time? Legal counsel.
Do we prefer to do one at a time?
One at a time.
We're seeing that.
Aye, as well.
So who are we getting now? Myself?
Me?
Yes.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. I'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now we'll open it up for the second person on this board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Lou Wallace.
Lou Wallace.
Mr. Chair, I'd nominate David Eaton.
David Eaton. Are there other nominations? If not, we'll do it in reverse order. That's the process. So all in favor of David Eaton? Raise your right hand. All in favor of Lou Wallace? Two. Next on the item is the, there are two slots for board members for the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Commission, which is a quarterly meeting. So I'll open up the board, the floor to nominate the people, the board members for those two positions. First one, first one is the position of Carl Ray. So let's wait that one first.
Mr. Chair, I'd nominate Tara Dye.
Tara Dye. Are there other nominations?
And for the other slot, Nate Kaiser. For the other slot, Nate Kaiser.
Let's do one at a time. We gotta do one at a time. So I have Tara. Are there other nominations? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, likes and? There aren't any. Now, let's see.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Nate Kaiser.
I have Nate Kaiser. Are there any other nominations? If not, all in favor of this motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have a vacant position on the Planning Commission. Mr. Christian was on that, so we'll need to replace him. I'll open up the floor for nominations there.
I'd like to nominate Tara Dye.
Tara Dye nominated to go on the Planning Commission. Anybody else?
Make a motion, nominate cease, and we elect Tara Dye.
Motion that nomination cease and Tara Dye be elected by acclamation, I'll need a second to that.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likes and? Next one we have is on the Regional Jail Authority. And currently, I'm having Mr. Christian and Mr. Lovelace on that, and both of those gentlemen are no longer on the board, so I'll open up the floor for nominations.
I nominate Nate Kaiser.
Have a nomination for Nate Kaiser. Any others? There are no others. I'll call for the vote on this. All in favor of Nate Kaiser being on the Regional Jail Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likes and? There aren't any.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate yourself, Steve Breeding, for the other twenty-fourth slot.
Have a nomination for Steve Breeding. Any further nominations? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likes and? Now we come back to the Cumberland Plateau Regional Waste Authority. We have two positions there, Tim Lovelace and Carl Ray.
I'd like to make a motion for, I'd like to nominate Nathan Kaiser.
Okay, Nathan Kaiser. Any further nominations for that position to replace Tim Lovelace? If not, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likes and? And then we have a, need a person to replace Carl Ray.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Andrew Hensley.
Okay, I have Andrew Hensley. Any further nominations? Okay, if there aren't any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likes and? Next on the, next on the item is Chief elected official, CLIO Board, which is Workforce Development Board. So I'll open up the floor for those nominations.
I nominate Steve Breeding.
Are there other nominations? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likes and? There aren't any. Next will be the Budget Finance Committee, which Chairman wants to correct one.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask David to serve with me on that board. And we can, we'll work a way to expand that once we do the bylaws. Okay. The requirements, the whole Hall Road Commission, Tim Lovelace served on that. And I guess the reason Tim had is because he's a district, probably the fewest paved roads in the whole county. So I'll open it up for nominations.
And since you just said that, I'm going to nominate Andrew Hensley.
Sure Andrew would appreciate it. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likes and? There aren't any. Okay, now, any community center, these are, here, these will be your appointments.
I would actually like to carry these over to February so that I can talk to some people.
Carry it over. You just tell us when you want to make those appointments, and we'll get back on the agenda. The next one is Spearhead Trail, Trail Waivers.
I'd like to make a recommendation. We put that off also until we get some of these new board members acclimated and understanding of what's going on with that.
We'll carry that one over as well. Okay. This brings us down to a point where we had, a point where we had added some additional considerations on there. And the first one was consideration of the IDA appointments. And the reason for this is that this last board meeting, Mr. Tony Doty was removed from the board, being a long-term member and being a member of the town council. We researched it and found out that through, from Dennis Jones and also from Philip Puckett, that the intended laws, that those two members had to be from the governing body of that particular town. The reason being because the reason they were appointed on there, they were allowed to appoint, is they often carried a $2 million bond. There's a point in time, probably, I guess, eight years ago, the town, the county couldn't get, couldn't do it unbonded. I mean, we were operating on there, as Mr. Lester says, a $3 million revenue anticipation there. So we relied on the town greatly to go in and do these bonds. And in members of the town, we wouldn't have been able to have anything even previously to that day. So I think what we need to do, we talked about it, and I think probably what we need to do is rescind the appointment of Mr. Schrader, who replaced Doty. And then we would, that would open up that slot, and then we could put Mr. Doty back on there. So I guess what I'll do. Now, according, according to council, we can, when you do this, when you rescind a motion, if you give prior notice to it, all it requires is a majority vote. But if you don't serve notice, which hasn't been served, you have to make, you have to pass it by a two-thirds majority vote. So we'll see how this one goes. So I'll entertain a motion to rescind, nominate, rescind the election of Mr. Schrader.
Upon the attorney's advice.
Upon attorney's advice.
I'll make that motion to rescind that motion that was made.
I'll need a second.
Do I need to read this? To reconsider?
No.
Recede?
Recede. It's not reconsidered, recede.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a second. Now, Mr. Kaiser, discussion, please.
I thought, I may be wrong, Alonzo, go back and check, but I thought that Tim Lovelace nominated Mr. Schrader. He took Mr. Christian off. See, Mr. Christian was his appointee.
No. Am I correct, Mr. Lester? Mr. Schrader replaced Tony Doty. That was the first one.
That was in succession of order, yes.
We nominated Tony Doty the second time.
Yes, we did.
Took him off there as well.
Yep.
So I have a motion and a second to rescind that motion, to remove Mr. Schrader. Apologies to Mr. Schrader, I really shouldn't have happened. So I'll call for a vote on it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likes and?
Aye.
Okay, let's do it by show of hands. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Or raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Two, five, two. So that measure carries. Now, what we have to do would be to open up the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Tony Doty.
Have a nomination, Mr. Doty to be placed back on the IDA. Need a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes. So we've been discovering that our other little towns in our county has borrowing power. So I'm going to ask council what we do if we run up on some other issues.
I would say that when this was written in 2002, it said two of the members shall come from a town that has used its borrowing capacity at that time. So I would say that if we decide to use, whether it's St. Paul or Homemaker, who might have that ability to do that, then we would have to come back before the board. You have the ability to appoint nine members, and then they would be entitled to two members and two members. This probably needs to be changed in the General Assembly to address this issue. But right now, if you decided, I would say, Ms. Wallace, if you decided to do that, then, or the county decided to do that, then we would have to put someone, two members from Homemaker Council on, or two members from St. Paul Council on, if we went down that road.
Only if they needed to provide it to, if they agreed to provide it to.
Yeah, they agreed to provide $2 million in a loan, which I'm not sure they would, but, you know, they might. But, I mean, you know, we might need it at some point in time if there's a big deal that comes through the IDA or somebody needs. So you never know.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Two. Okay. This motion carries. Okay, the next one is consideration of the DSS appointments. Sometime ago, I'd asked Katie, she was the county attorney at that point, too, because we had originally, now Rebecca's been on there, what, 12 years or 16 years? I think in any normal board member, normally served for two consecutive terms and then come off. Well, Katie found in the, in the regulation in their bylaws that for a board, to be a board representative, which Ms. Dye was, that you, there were no restrictions on the number of terms on your board to, on your service, but that you serve at the pleasure of the board, which is where we're at now, I think. So I guess what we need to do is, if somebody wants to make an appointment or wants to replace Ms. Dye, we need a motion to that day.
I'd like to make a motion that we replace Ms. Dye with Tara Dye.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Open for discussion.
So we are starting to set a precedence if we need to remove someone from the board we can, is that correct?
Say that again.
I say we are starting to set a precedence that we can remove someone from the board, right?
Well, only if they serve at the pleasure of the board. And I mean, that's, that's written directly into the bylaws of the DSS. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, right hand. Two. Two. Now, the last item that we added on was consideration of the Highway Safety Committee. I'll open up the floor for that.
I'd like to make a motion to immediately dissolve the Highway Safety Committee, pending verification from BDOT, that elimination will not jeopardize the safety of Bristol County citizens. And I'd like to hit on some discussion, if we get a second.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to dissolve the Highway Safety Commission, immediately, open for discussion.
I'm, I'm not an attorney, we have one here today, but, uh, I see this board is kind of doubling down on what the taxpayer already pays for, uh, the taxpayer. Uh, Virginia pays for BDOT, and in Russell County, we pay for a Highway Safety Board. Now, safety is important, but our county administrator can put on our website the route that you would take to contact BDOT if you see safety issues within the county, and that can be done by any citizen sitting in here today, without the taxpayer having to pay for a board to do this.
Any further discussion?
Uh, I don't, I don't have a problem with what Mr. Hensley said, but, um, sometimes this has been a really handy-dandy thing to have, and I've never thought of it as having a dissolution, but I, I don't guess I'd be opposed to it. However, um, sometimes we have things that don't get done, and, and the Highway Safety Committee has dogged those things. So I can see a good, bad, and whatever on it. So how much does this board cost the county? Does anybody know?
It costs, uh, a meal at the Nanza at least once a month for all board members.
Mr. Lester, what is it, $50 stipend on me?
That is great.
$50 stipend.
Bless the Lord. Bless the Lord.
Bless the Lord.
It's about $4,000 here, $45,000.
I'd say, Mr. Chairman, it's a promise made and a promise kept by Mr. Hensley, cutting government spending. I like it.
Any further discussion? There's no further discussion. No further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor, signify if I've seen eye. All opposed, like, like sign? Unanimous. That ends that particular section, and we come to citizens' comments. Get the sheet, people who signed up to comment.
We couldn't find one.
It's outside. I guess we'll make one, then.
It's out here.
We all know I want to talk to you.
Okay, first on the list is Mr. Randy Burke. Mr. Burke, you're familiar with all the rules.
Yeah, we're small, man, that's all right. First, welcome all the new board members. Five and two's hurting, don't get to it. Most hurt when it's five and two against just the way it was. But, uh, I know there's going to be changes made, and I'm glad we'll have some changes made. One change I would like to see, I rode by Pizza Town today about 1:00, a little after 1:00. There was, I didn't sit till I was on top of it and looked over. I saw six deputy cars, at least, that I got counted. Friend of mine called me, said, "No, there was two more there, and three town law there." Do we need eight dep, and who's protecting the county? If they're all out at Pizza Town eating, who's protecting the county? I could see a couple people going, I don't know whose boss is, if it's Alonso or who, but that's one of the changes we need. We don't need all of them out there at 1:00. And everybody here, if you've rode by Pizza Town much time, you know it's there every day. There's four of my cars sitting there every day. And there's about 12 today. I just wonder who's protecting the county when they're all out there eating? And, and I support Bill, hey, he won the election, I support him. I went on, went for him, but I'll support him until he gives me a reason not to. Another thing I've noticed is, there's a thing in there for constitutional officers to report. I've never seen a constitutional officer get up in here and give a report. If we're feeding them money, why ain't they out there giving reports? And we are the ones feeding the money. It's our taxes, it's our stuff. I want to see some constitutional officers give some reports. You know, one I'd like to notice, one we're going to start making drug arrests. And, and question for all of you, when's the last time we had seizure sales? When's the last, probably about 14 years ago, is when we had a real seizure sale. That's a lot of money that could go to taxes, if it's a seizure sale. Jonesboro sold 80s of vehicles. We all admit there's another problem in living. As Andy Van Jones said, in Red Russell County. Then there should be some vehicles, there should be some guns, there should be some stuff turned in that we can sell. So I'd like to see some seizure sales take place. I'd like to see some arrests take place, if we're going to, hey, do what they want to do, if we're going to re-strike our cars, and we're going to change our uniforms, let's get some arrests. It goes back to the state, I, I know, it's not all on Bill. They were eating at Pizza Town when Steve was there, there wasn't no arrest then. So whoever's in charge of putting a little fire in the fireplace, show us part of the door, we can see some arrests and some seizure sales, and quit having 14 of them out there eating at one time. You'll see the bare paths. Let a couple of them go in. That's fine, but we don't need no police force out there at one time either. That's all I've got, you know. By the way, appreciate all your use.
Next on is Amy Branson.
Uh, 224 Dave's Memorial Drive, Castlewood. So I'm going to talk about the $35 million that Governor Yonkin proposed for the Bristol Dome. Um, Glenn Yonkin states, "Us Virginians were blessed to be surrounded by an abundance of treasured natural resources. This investment delivers on my administration's steadfast commitment to ensure our natural resources are preserved for future Virginians to enjoy. Bristol city leaders have worked with state leaders for more than a year to try to secure funding to assist with the landfill costs. These funds will be used to pay for the financial commitments the city has made to comply with the consent decree it entered with Virginia DEQ and the Office of the Attorney General of Virginia to implement the list of remediation projects recommended by the expert panel to address the issues with the Bristol landfill. But it could be months before Bristol leaders know if they can cash that $35 million check. And until then, the city's staring down the barrel of nearly $300 million in long-term debt liability, much of it attributed to current and future expenditures for its shuttered landfill. That sobering news was presented to the Bristol City Council by independent auditors. The state's $35 million would pay for steps taken to address the many issues with the landfill, but would not impact the city's previous $102 million in long-term debt, or would it assist with the closing of the landfill and the required post-closure monitoring, which adds an estimated $90 million to the bill. The EPA requires post-monitoring for a landfill for 30 years. Bristol Mayor Neil Osburn said, "It's a startling amount when you look at our long-term obligations, which include an estimated amount for post-closure monitoring. It's a really big number, almost $300 million. For a city of 17,000 people, it is scary, it is very scary." Uh, last year's sister Bristol, city, sister city Bristol, Tennessee sued Bristol, Virginia, to complete a series of the projects recommended by the state panel of experts, to try to address the problems with the landfill. The city recently borrowed $30.7 million, which includes a 2.86 million gas collection system, a 1.6 million sidewall odor mitigation system, a liner for $3 million, a stormwater management system for $4.8 million, a $6.7 million benzene removal system, and the source of the benzene is still unknown. So we talked about the financial costs that are visible for a landfill, but what about the other costs? What about the increase in cost of healthcare for our citizens? What about the fact this landfill will make people sick? What about the effects on tourism in our area? Will any new businesses come here? Will any new citizens come here? Or will the taxpayers that are currently here leave the county for better and safer opportunities? What about the destruction of our beautiful home and ecosystem? And I just think to myself, what could the county in this area have done with $35 million if we weren't cleaning up a mess? Thank you.
Who on this stage? Tammy Garrett? Tammy Garrett?
She's coming.
Getting in on Tammy Garrett, 336 Russell Street, Lebanon. This is my third time addressing you all over the landfill. Um, for you, the new ones, and just as a reminder, I'm going to pick up where I left off the last time when I ran out of time. The cost of the landfills, um, are overwhelmingly underpriced. And again, I'm going to state that this is not, um, my opinion, this is research that I've done. Uh, what I'm going to talk about tonight is still coming from the National Institute of Health. So, United States landfill companies only need to monitor landfills for 30 years, um, after they're closed. After this relatively brief period of time, the taxpaying public is responsible and remains liable for the degradation of the facilities and any environmental impacts and costs that are incurred. In Canada, by contrast, landfills are required to be monitored for 400 years. Now I'm going to an article, um, from virginplaces.org about landfills in Virginia. The Catlet Mountain landfill was used by Front Royal in Warren Counties. It closed in the 1970s. Four decades later, 40 years later, excessive rainwater seeped through the clay pit and into the nearby creeks in the counties. The counties had to spend over $200,000 to build a rainwater diversion system. So this was 40 years after the landfill was kept enclosed. Now, Mr. Breeding, last month, when you spoke, you stated that your children don't live here, and your grandchildren don't live here, you have children that are far away. If they did come back here and move here, would you want them to be living near a landfill? Because someone's children and someone's grandchildren are going to be living near a landfill. People are going to be living near a landfill, if we allow this to happen. The last thing I want to address is this. Several people have mentioned that the board needs to be more transparent, and you all told us last month that you were hoping you would be more transparent with us. But I want you to know that, if you haven't already heard, there are rumors circulating in the county that money has changed hands in the county for this landfill to come into the county. And that's why we need transparency. We need to know what is going on with this. Because the rumors are very, very bad. They look very bad on the board, and they look very bad on the county. So we do need the transparency. And I hope very soon that's going to happen. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Gary Hughes.
Gary Hughes, uh, 175 Community Church Road, Castlewood, Virginia. Thank you. Why do we need a mountain landfill to take out of state garbage? That is just asking for trouble. That we don't need, what would these communities do for us? A solution must be found that does away with landfill incineration, where the trash is contaminated, is a much better, uh, option, because the fire destroys, viruses are no passive, and the volume of trash is greatly reduced, electricity and hot water is produced, and the metal waste can be recycled. We were fooled around 100 years ago by rich people who offered a little money to make very poor people, and they took it and sold their coal rights. Don't let some rich people continue to use us to, out of, excuse me, don't let the rich people convince us to take out state, out of state trash, only to make themselves rich. The land will be sold, the landfill will be sold before any problems show up. And then who knows who will be operating the landfill? It is the, is this the legacy we want to leave to our future generations to deal with? Thank you.
Derek Hall. Mr. Hall here.
I think he left, let me.
He left?
Hold on, let me go check. Yes, he left.
Okay, next is Jared Ring.
Jared Ring, Castlewood, Virginia. Evening, y'all. Congratulations to the new board members. I was already planning on talking about transparency this evening, before you went into closed session, first thing, beginning of the year. It's already been overwhelmingly demonstrated that the public is against the landfill. And even if it hadn't been, that a large-scale landfill hurts residents, agrotourism, potential residents, it's simply common sense. What information is available to the public about this landfill, over the course of the previous months, has had to be wrung out through Freedom of Information requests due to lack of transparency from this board. Every time this board has met on the landfill thus far that the public's aware of, it has gone into closed session, away from the public eye, and I believe that likely includes this evening as well. I believe that the closed sessions are detrimental to transparency. I believe that they are detrimental to public faith in this board, as several previous speakers have denoted this evening. There may well be good reason for these closed sessions, but from the outside looking in to the average citizen, they look downright clandestine in the best of lights. It looks like the board has the ability to simply hide anything that it knows the public won't like, from public view, by making that topic fit guidelines that are very broad, as was mentioned earlier this evening. If that's an unfair assessment, uh, please feel free to correct me with any information I don't have to FOIA to get. Sunlight is the best disinfectant, and where taxpayer money is being spent, the taxpayer should be able to see. Trying to get back my speech here. Furthermore, I believe, and I've spoken before about not wanting to be one of the young people who ran from this county, I wanted to stay and try to help correct issues here, I wanted to be part of the economy getting better, I wanted to see this place flourish. And now there's going to be a landfill two miles from my home, and I can't imagine anybody that wants to stay beside that and wait for their family to get sick. And on that note, I believe that any member of this board that has enabled this landfill at any stage to have betrayed this county, its people and its future. Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, you're up.
Jennifer Chumbly, 285 Ivy Ridge Road. Uh, first off, I do have a FOIA request for y'all tonight, which I, I got one for each of you, if you would like it, to all of the new board members. Um, just a couple notes that I have. Just a couple notes that I have. The location for this landfill is not geographically stable due to past mining, and there will be issues. We all know this. The local ecosystem is vital to our area and it isn't found anywhere else. And we've got to remember that. In our area, it's not found anywhere else. The town of Cleveland will be left with all the devastation from trucks and trains coming through and no benefits. Zero benefits. Cleveland was left off the table on this. So, don't help the town at all. It only hurts the town. Hazardous household or industrial waste deposited into landfills can spread disease to our families, our wildlife, and our farms, and be devastating to all of Russell County. Trash from outside of Russell County is not, is simply not worth this cost and not worth putting, letting a company come in for profit and put in a landfill that can go bankrupt or carry the lowest insurance minimums. And us become the large, one of the largest landfills in the United States. The cost to our communities is too great. Most for-profit landfills cause devastating effects to the surrounding area of people. And what does Russell County worth to us? What is our sellout point? Is it 5 million a year, 10 million a year, 15 million a year? What is that amount? Whatever it is, the cost to close this landfill and monitor it will be so much greater. Russell landfill is located on 138 acres. From what I've gathered from deeds, this will be 1,250 acres, this landfill. All right? The largest landfill in America right now is located in California. It accepts 10,300 tons per day until 2022. We're planning on accepting up to 6,000 tons per day. The largest private landfill in Virginia right now is located on 1,300 acres. This is 1,200 acres. And it's owned by Waste Management. They were fined $14,200 after a sleepy driver let 8,000 gallons of bleach aid spill after the fact. All of this is after the fact. That's how it always works. It always works after the fact. Another private landfill in Ohio located on 238 acres was struck by lightning, caused a large landslide, uncovered trash. Private landfill in Michigan located on 755 acres operated by Waste Management has a class action lawsuit due to odors of methane gas. A private-owned landfill in Alabama just recently had to pay $138,000 due to hazardous waste found in two open pits, one tread, one tread. And they had eight instances of bleach aid management violations, three instances of waste not being properly compacted, three instances of waste slopes that were too steep, and these violations were all found on one tread. Just one. Is the money the county stands to make worth the livelihood of our communities? Are those host agreement fees worth it? Our families, our farmers, our animals, our natural resources? And I'll say my time's up. So, should this proceed, there will be violations. It will just be how bad and what's the cost to recover. Thank you. Now, getting the FOIA ready, I mean, the FOIA request here in a second.
David Ball.
Hey, how you doing, guys? Title of my speech is "The Power of Cooperation: Building Stronger Communities Together." And that's exactly how I'm going to kick off the new year in 2024. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, our community and the board. Want to talk about a force that's often overlooked yet holds immense power and the potential for everyone involved, and that's cooperation. It's the glue that binds communities, people, and businesses together, fostering growth and conveying mutual benefit for everyone. Have an example for you today concerning e-commerce and community cooperation. As a dasher for DoorDash, I've witnessed firsthand how cooperation between delivery services and local stores and restaurants can create a win-win scenario for those who participate. Some stores initially resist embracing delivery services citing revenue or cost concerns. However, a closer look reveals a different story. Take, for instance, restaurants and merchants who are hesitant about accepting DoorDash orders. While some publicly outcry voicing struggles with sales, DoorDash presents for them an opportunity for growth and an avenue to tap into a broader market. By leveraging a delivery platform, retail businesses, and not just restaurants, all retail businesses gain increased market exposure while also catering to a growing segment of customers seeking the convenience of dining from the comfort and safety of their own home, all without the distraction of having to go get it themselves. For individuals like those who work from home, stay-at-home parents, those who may be drinking and need to stay off the road, certain customers with mobility and accessibility limitations, DoorDash has become an indispensable lifeline with an easy-to-use mobile web interface. It's more than just delivery. This is about accessibility, inclusion, and convenience, all wrapped together in a single delivery-as-a-service product that engages customers with your business at the time they need it most, right now. According to their website, DoorDash offers a free trial period for merchants of up to 30 days with no commissions, and their most expensive premier partnership offers the most for struggling businesses because it also includes a growth guarantee. Which is to say, if your business doesn't accept a minimum number of orders, you aren't charged at all for commissions. An undeniable win-win. If growth is your goal, DoorDash offers an affordable turnkey solution you can use to succeed. If this applies to you as a business owner, especially if your business is struggling to find new customers or revenue, I would implore you to reach out to DoorDash Merchant Services. Before you say you would rather support local businesses instead of handing all your hard-earned money to a corporation, realize a few things. While DoorDash is publicly traded on NASDAQ, as local contractors, we aim to support local businesses while providing a safe, reliable courier service at a fraction of the cost of traditional delivery. A call on our local retail and restaurant business community to help support us in what we're doing by taking part of the evolving landscape of local e-commerce. We can build together what none of us can do alone.
Excuse me.
Unfortunately...
I'm sorry.
Yes. I know, I'm all out of time for this month. I wanted to say, as I stand here in opposition to the landfill, we have a lot of unanswered questions, concerns, and grievances regarding the M.A.S. 3 proposal. And we would appreciate, anticipate, and expect community cooperation from the board moving forward. Thank you. To be continued. Happy New Year and God bless, Russell County, Virginia.
Thank you. That takes care of everybody on the list.
I've never got to sign the what now, sir.
Sir, you want to speak?
Yes.
Come on in.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Don't just yell out. Just, you're welcome to come and speak.
All right, thank you.
Three minutes, okay?
Okay, and I am heartfelt when I say this, so you forgive me.
Tony Smith.
Tony Smith. I was getting ready to tell that. I was asking forgiveness when we went, well, sir. But I have been here, and my purpose was to get y'all to feel some shame on this. That was my purpose for the year. But I'm a God-fearing man. I don't know. That comes first. And then, I'm a conservative. I'm probably more conservative than every one of you sitting here. I really am. Conservative. But I don't understand. Now, when it comes to women, I like women always, I... You know, I just... But I can't get it through to everybody. They was a landfill. They was a landfill, uh, from '65, '66 to '75. And I was a little boy, my uncles ain't drinking, so we would be down there. I'd be wetting, you know, just little kids. And if people come in at night, you get them locked the gate, and they take these big old drums and bury them out there in the trash dump. And you can see the oozing coming out into the roads, you know? I don't understand why I can't get that through anybody's mind. It's already a dump there. Ain't nobody looking after it. It's oozing through and people drinking the water. Castlewood's drinking it, St. Paul's drinking it, Back Valley's drinking it. Everybody on the more rims are drinking it. And it's really sad to me. I don't understand. And let me say this. I don't, and this don't make me special. I own land in seven counties and three states. And Russell County is the hardest to get a septic system approved in any state that I know of. I mean, you can't, you cannot get it done. And I spent thousands of dollars with the cash. That don't make me special. But like I said, I'm Christian first, conservative second, and I'm getting old. I ain't going to live long. You know, y'all might think I'll live a hundred, but I'm out where a few of us do. You know what I'm saying? But it's the little kids. It's the little kids. I don't like coming over here. And I got, I got to feel guilty about trying to make you feel ashamed of putting a trash dump in there. But you probably will never see me again in this platform, you know? I just don't see no sense in it. You can't get an answer out of no woman. But search your heart. Search your heart. That's what I'm asking you to do. I mean, these people, these are very intelligent people here, and they spoke well. They spoke better than I could ever speak. But I don't think you want your kids drinking the water. I don't think your kid, you want your kids taking a bath in it. So, when you go to bed at night and you say you pray, or as I say, we do, and I am quite fussy about that, I really want to apologize to you. But just ask God and pray about it. You realize there's one there and he's an everything kind. So, I mean, I guess, all I can say, when people sit down and eat my beef, I just think, I just got a landfill ready to give on. Give this to the, give it to the, I'll kill him. Take your life, eat your turkey, children, and ride back, it's all I want. And God bless you.
Is there anybody else?
I shouldn't run against you.
Well, name it.
You know, I live next to everything.
What's your name again?
Old Cook. I live next to it. We're not this young, we're going to be near four. You can stand on this bridge down here. It's a tree. You can't sing no fish shit, Rick. It's already done up pollution and going in our drains. My brother lived on Sandy Bridge. They come in there with these ashtrips. When they cracked the last way, his walk become this black, except for his paint up there. And have they put water through them? I mean, you know, look. Look at what our kids is going to be growing up to. Our grandchildren. You know, hey, I know I'm in my 50s. I ain't going to live forever. I'm going to have somewhere that I love, and my grandchildren will see more. That ain't going to be destroyed. There are better things to do with this money than that. They put something in, it's going to destroy their families. That's always a sight.
Anybody else?
My name is J.J. Eaton. Congratulations to the new board. It's nice to see new faces. Couple issues. I just got elected to the Russell County School Board, and I wanted to come here as a board member to reach out to you all as an open dialogue. Our teachers' pay and our staff's pay has been left behind, well behind, for at least 10 years. And I know there's things that we need to take care of on the budgetary items of the school board, but also, we need to have a working relationship with the county. I would like to see us have a committee between ourselves to where we could talk and try to get the budget straightened out to where our teachers and staff could see more money in their pocket. We lost five more teachers after Christmas. They noticed five of us before Christmas break and they're gone now. This is, this is a crisis. Besides the landfill issues, that's a crisis too. But this is a big crisis as well. We, we're losing our good teachers and we're losing students because, and I'm not saying this to be mean, but when we hire back and we're the lowest in the state of Virginia, who are we going to get unless they just live here and they want to work here? Who are we going to hire? Because we can't get teachers right now. We don't, we can't even get a list of five of them to replace the five we just lost. We're looking for long-term substitutes. And it's, it's really a shame, but I'm not placing blame on you all or nobody, but I'm saying it's, it's time we forget the past and look for the future and work together. And, and I know the county doesn't have a tax base big enough to where they could really chip in and help, but we're going to have to have help from you all. Have to. And I know, I've talked to you all, and I know you're willing to do that. The school, sad to say, is the largest employer in the county. And, and keeping those employees here, you're not only keeping employee, you're, you're keeping tax base here in the county. They live here. Some of those teachers that's leaving, not only leaving, driving to the next county, they're actually picking up and donning. So, we're losing a tax base as far as that goes. But I'm looking forward to working with you all. On a second note, if I've got any time left, is that out? Okay, well, I'll just quit right there then. But I look forward to looking, working with you guys to get this resolved. So, thank you.
You wanted to get it started.
Oh, well, I didn't, I just started. I think zero over.
I was going to be quiet today, but nobody ever brought up anything I wanted to hear straight to you all. But the day before the election, we had a landfill meeting right over here in the conference room. And at that time, everybody was against the landfill. You know, oh, come and give me your vote. I'm against the landfill. We'll fight it every way we can. We have to be transparent. We have to let the public know what's going on. And you're in and we need to know. So, it's time, you think? And I'm against the landfill. All right? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good morning.
Yes, you go.
Amanda Cook.
Pardon me?
Amanda Cook.
Okay, Amanda.
I just want to let you all know, I'm originally from McHannon County. I moved after I graduated high school. I come to Russell County because it did, as far as the atmosphere, the people, reminded me a lot of where I grew up at. I would hate to have to move somewhere else because of my health, my family's health. I've been here 17 years, and I feel more at home in Russell County than I did in Buck County, where I live in Florida. Excuse me. And I myself am a county worker. And I hope, you know, I try to appreciate everything that you do for us, but we do need some help. And I am against the landfill.
Anybody else?
Josh Burgess, 1857 Arch Pro, Cleveland. And welcome, new board members. I'm a citizen of the county, a proud citizen. I'm glad to live here. I am. And why am I glad to live here? Like, we got low crime. You leave your car in a parking lot, you go to stores, leave running. We have our environment, it's clean compared to most. It really is. And I live here because we don't have a mega landfill. And it will not just affect Russell County. This thing will take Southwest Virginia with it. People call a landfill, landfills are not constructed as your local dump anymore. They're constructed as mega landfills. And they will serve a majority of the East Coast. And you talk about your schools and you talk about your population and you want generations to stay here. So, how long have I lived here? How long has my family lived here? Y'all don't know that. As far as I can count, there's seven generations of me that have served Russell County and still here. And I would love to stay here. I would. But I'm not going to live in a dump. I won't. We will be chasing our health for the rest of our days. And the increased traffic in the area will be unimaginable. It will be hundreds of trucks a day. Can you imagine meeting those trucks on Cleveland Mountain, going down gravel, dig? It's not going to be good. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
More call. Anybody else wants to come? Last call. Close. Better get them on the move. There you go. One last.
Good afternoon. My name's Chris McDonald. I live on Ivy Ridge. And if you're familiar with the county, that landfill is going to be right in my back door. I'm a coal miner, a farmer. I'm a coal miner, a farmer. The farm has been in my family for 150 years. My great-granddaughter, my son, lives there on the property. And I'm very worried. And I'm just now starting to hear about all this. And I, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen. I don't know what the plan is. But I'm very concerned about it. I have a well. Get on water out of ground. We have a lot of cave systems right there. Not only that, but I also worked at Moss 3. I know the property. You know, I don't know what their plan is with the landfill. It, it's compacted refuge. I imagine they're going to, and, and the middle pork ponds and 30 acre pond. I don't know what the plan is. But I just, you're here to represent the people and I just can't see this being good for the people of Russell County. I really can't. And especially me, because it's right in my backboard. And some of the other people that spoke, I know it's going to be right in our backboard. And that's why it's such an emotional thing to us. Now granted, if it was in Belfast or Moffinson, you know, it, it might not work as bad. I know they're selfish. But it is here. I mean, it's like from here to Fook City. And, and we have a vast, I mean, there, the whole thing where I live is nothing but a cave system. And it's right, the geology of the land changes right there. Sandstone to limestone. And it's here. Walk through that. And we want to take that chance. Does the people of Russell County want to take a chance like you? It's something to think about. Before, before we go too far, I mean, some things you can't take back. Once, saying, once you pull that trigger, you can't take it back. And it's something for everybody to think about, to think about hard. Welcome, Bay Hoggian board members. And I hope, I hope you'll think about what everybody said. Thanks.
Okay, one last call. Anybody else? Don't look out the door, Jennifer.
Looks clear.
Okay. Somebody come? Okay. I'm going to close public comment then. I do want to make one statement. I understand you think we've been secretive. But they're under, oh, you know, this, landfills are nothing more than another business coming into the county. They, they become really big business. And whether you believe it or not, that whole area over there is permitted as a refuse field right now. Slate field is what it is. What this group of people have been doing is taking some of that refuse out, these old coal fines that were screened out years and years and years ago. They've been able to take those out and blend them with some other stuff on site there. And they were taking it over to Virginia City and burning a lot of it. So they're cleaning out a lot of that area. Ponds up there are all, well, they're practically drained out anyway, those ponds up on top. We are really close. I would like to say by the end of the month, first February, we'll be able to have an information meeting and all this stuff. You can see it for yourself. You can see what the whole area looks like. Granted, it's 1,200 and some odd acres, Jennifer, but not all of it is, could possibly be a landfill. There's no way. But at any rate, you'll, you'll be able to look at this. They'll have their consultants here. You can ask questions. You can see what it looked like beforehand. You can see what it looks like now. They've created a couple of hundred acres of level property over there that will be just a great, probably one of the biggest industrial sites in the whole camp. Well, in the whole south, southwest Virginia, really. And, but you'll be able to ask questions, get answers, and you'll get them from the, from the, from the experts. In fact, one of the guys who's working with them is still named Ernie Hope, who Bristol called him in and his company in for, to help them with remedial action. So he can tell you what happened over at Bristol and, you know, what the implications were, what happened, where, for and why. But really close. So bear with us, you know, another 30 days or so. And I hope what they'll do is rent a government center up here, advertise really well, and then let everybody come. Let's throw this stuff out in the air, open air. You can get some answers, some questions. As far as being more transparent on our, our local stuff, I feel your pain. I think we're going to have to modify these bylaws a little to, to allow us to, you know, converse back and forth with everybody. Yet, to the point that, you know, I'm, I'm almost ready just to say, you know, maybe every third meeting, we'll just have a short session and then we'll just open it up with questions and answers. So where we can talk back and forth. I firmly believe that you guys have got some good ideas out there. But I know that you don't know all the restrictions that we're put under. You know, I mean, it sounds easy to do a thing, but there's, there's, Mr. Kilgore would tell you, there's a litany of regulations that we have to work through or reasons that we can or can't do this. But you need to know that. We need to know your ideas. You need to know that. So I'm, I'm hopeful we'll be able to talk a little more in the coming meetings. So that's all I've got to say about that. Any other board member want to say anything? Apparently I've already said too much.
I just want to say I really look forward to the informational meeting. I think that, you know, as many of you all, whether you are for it, against it, whatever, you need to come and you need to ask the hard questions. I spoke with the gentleman from Russell County Reclamation. And I told him, I said, you know, this is going to be in my district. And a lot of my people are not happy. And I told him, I said, you know, we really need questions answered. I spoke with Amy Branson earlier today. And she informed me that there are 324 signatures online for the petition and then there's more, correct?
Oh, yeah, a bunch of them.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, every person on there deserves to be heard and their questions answered. And, you know, just given that time. So I hope that when they do have that meeting, you all will come out and you will make yourself heard.
So is this the required public meeting? Is that what we're calling this? Because I know many times we make a meeting.
I don't know if it'll be a public hearing. There will ultimately have to be a public hearing. This, this has probably been more of an informational meeting.
This is something that when I talk to them, I really pushed for. Because I feel like that it is important. You know, there's one thing to have the public hearing after certain things are already in place. But I want information out there before anything is in place. I want everyone to know what is going on. I want you to be able to ask questions. I want us to be able to ask questions. You know, this is, if, I mean, this is just a proposal. So we need to figure out what they're actually proposing. All the rumors and, you know, just like with the FOIA things, sometimes things don't fit together. You don't get the whole picture if you don't know the questions to ask. So, you know, we need to go there. We need to ask them direct questions. And then those questions feed off and you ask more questions. So.
So will we have the, you know, we hired the person to look into the dump. We have all that information prior to this meeting that we're going to have so we can look through the professional assessment that the county paid for so that we know what questions to ask?
We, we really didn't pay for it. But what, they came, I guess it's been, what, over a year ago, I guess. They were finishing up part of their reclamation. They were looking for post-mining land use. We didn't know they were going to propose a landfill until August 7th at the board meeting. They came in and addressed us in executive session, said, we are going to formally propose a landfill. We thought that they might be looking. But until then, we didn't, we hired a consultant to look at their data. And we can probably, I'd say we can prob, they'll make that, I'd say they will make that information. They'll, anyway, they did what you call fatal flawing out. See if there's anything that just absolutely killed it right on the spot before they could do anything else. They didn't find anything. They didn't find anything. The guy that we hired at one time was, I guess he was executive. Executive Director of DQ or Chairman of DQ. Director of DAP. And, you know, so he, he, what he did is he monitored, monitored their stuff on our behalf. So we, you know, knew that it wasn't any fraud or anything like that. He's pretty tough now. On August 7th, when we found out that they were going to propose a landfill, we hired a counsel, legal counsel, to protect us, you know, from any legal issues. It's a guy with Gentry Lock. Some older fellows have a lot of experience in landfills. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I would imagine you can get anything. They'd be glad to give you anything you want. They'd be glad to take you up on the landfill side. But, I mean, if you haven't been up there, you ought to go up there and look at it, see what it looks like right now. But they'll have pictures of what it was before they started the reclaim project. They'll have pictures of what it looks like right now. And they can show you where the landfill is going to go. It's not right down on the river. It's going to be back up in there somewhere. And they can talk about some of the other things that they want to do on that particular site. It's not just the landfill. They've got other things that they would like to propose. But I'm not going to steal any of their thunder. You need, you need to make sure that you attend these, this informational meeting. Get your question, all these questions you've asked us, ask them, ask these people. And, and they'll have the people they can answer on their own behalf. Be assured, we all live here. I'm not going to do anything that's going to jeopardize my family, my grandchildren, or anything like, nor will any of these people up here. But you have to understand that, you know, I've heard a lot of the, a lot of the referenced as landfills have been to landfills. I had one lady reference a landfill in Lebanon. That was 40 years ago. And, because I lived across the hill from it. We used to go up there. It was kind of like an open dump. It's at Lee Street, I believe is where it was at. It's all reclaimed and covered up. But, you know, it's, and, and the one Mr. Smith references, I think that was over at, maybe over at Carva. Or not Carva, but over where the, where the trash, where the trash dumpster was over there.
That's one of them.
At Carva.
That's one of them. There's only one.
And, and there were some ponds back there, but I think to my knowledge, it's all been reclaimed and everything. It's in pretty decent shape. But be, be aware, we'll try to get plenty of, give you plenty of time and, you know, make this, you know, get the notice out, you know, a couple of weeks ahead of time. But we're getting closer. We're getting closer so we can shed some light on this. And it's going to answer a lot of your questions.
You're going to tell us how much the county?
It's hard for me to sit up here and lie pretending and not want to answer, answer your questions. But it's, it's not my place to do this, these people that are doing this thing. Pardon?
Yes, I have one question. I'd like to know, is this a county deal or private deal?
Private landfill. The county, we own the landfill.
See, that's, that's one of the, excuse me, circulating that it is a private deal.
It is a private deal. I would not vote to have the county own a landfill. That's the last thing I would vote for. I mean, the amount of bond alone. These people are probably going to have 10, 12, 15 million dollars in it before they put their first ton of it through.
Who's going to make them the bond?
On the existing landfill that we have right now, we're probably spending, what? The existing landfill, monitoring the leachate and all that, we're spending probably $3 billion. $2,000, $3,000 dollars a month at least.
But that's ours, aren't you?
That's the one down at, down on 71.
Been actually closed, but we still have to maintain.
You're monitoring them forever. It's like having a terminal illness. I don't know if there is any termination that they don't tell us.
The thing I, I think that needs to happen, I think with this leadership, and I agree with Tara, is transparency. Now, I'll tell you, we don't know every, everything about it, everything. And we're learning as well as the public is on. And that's the reason we had to hire these people, to kind of come in and, and tell us legal, the legal side and, and all this, what, where we could go and what we could do and could not do. So I want to assure the public, and I will assure the public, that, I don't know if anybody on this board has took anything money-wise to, to get swayed in either way. I mean, I've got three kids, two, two grandbabies. And, you know, we, we've got to take this ultimately serious about where, what it's going to do and, and the impact it's going to be. And I think, I told Steve today, I think this information session to bring in the experts so you all can ask them, and we'll be there too to ask them questions also, you know, to get the information that you need to get clarity. And I, I mean, I would, I think it's going to be the right thing to do is to have this information session.
I want to be one of the first to thank you all for doing anything that you can to do to stop this.
Is there anything you can, we can legally do to stop it at this point?
Well, I think you have to have all the information before you make, you can't make a decision without having all the information. That's our job. People collect the information, look at it. We have what's good and bad and then make it, the best decisions you can make on behalf of the county.
Is the county going to negotiate this?
Just because you think it's bad doesn't necessarily mean it is. Just because I think it's good doesn't necessarily mean what it is.
Is this a done deal or not?
I speak out. I can't hear you.
Is this a done deal already or is there anything we can do to stop it?
No, it's, it's not a done deal, you know? Even if, listen, even if we get to the point that we let it go on through, they still have to go get it, all that is permission to get it permitted. The permitting process is probably like
Yeah, it's done. The regulatory agency just sits down and does post-inspections. You, you have a check list. They, they check everything on the list. They grant them the permit and then they do inspections. And they find them based on the findings. You know, that's what DQ does. They don't, they don't say, no, you can't do that because it's a bad idea. But I'm sure if you can get somebody on, you can get one. They told us that. DQ told us that.
Well, you're going to put us in a position where we're going to try to answer that. We're not going to. Just be aware that it's coming soon, you know, say within the next 30 days or so. We'll try to push that forward. They are going to, they're probably going to be willing to take anybody anywhere to look at existing landfills. Okay? I'm, I'm through talking. I can't, I've said too much already.
So even if we have this information session and they answer our questions, how does that help anything?
Ma'am, I, I'm not going to answer any more questions. That's a question for people at the landfill. Let, let him answer. If I, if I, if I tell you something, you know, I can't help, but maybe my opinion is like, well, to that. I'm a, I'm a registered professional engineer and I've worked in landfills. I did, worked in Mercer Creek landfill, up in Bluefield. And that, but that's been 25 years ago, so maybe 30. At that time, the cost of just one square foot of the drainage under the drain system, just the liner that seals everything off, it was $5, $6 a square foot. It's astronomical, but I can't imagine what it costs now. Mr. Lester has a piece of liner in his office. It's about, you think it's not a trash bag. It's something about this thick, you know, and it's all fused together. It's heat sealed together in the, it's kind of like this HDP, like water port fuse. They fuse, they heat fuse it together and the seams are stronger than the material itself. So that's all I'm going to say. Let's move on.
But in 30 years, I'll sit for, you'll wait three weeks.
Let's move on, Mr. Lester. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I don't think we have any constitutional law for this left over.
At least she was.
She left.
Thank you, Chairman. First on the county administrative report is, of course, the Baco preliminary legislative program. This is also in the board package. This is what is before the general assembly this year. And since, yeah, since Terry's going to be in there with this, these are the, what's been proposed, you know, for legislative, some of the new laws. This is give, because the board will be attending legislative meeting, which is in line item number two on December the 31st, 24, and the local government day of February the 1st, 2024. So the governing board will be up there representing you. They not only deal with legislative issues and regulatory issues, legislative issues, but they're also up there with the funding agencies to, you know, go and see what kind of extra funding that we can get appropriated for various programs and grants. So, and we've been, they've been pretty good at this, as you well, you can see. Over the years, if you look, we, we get a lot of grants. So. Next on the county administrative report is, is the governor's recommendation of the budget bills, which is FY '24 caboose and a biennial budget. Not to speak for the governor, as y'all have seen in the news, of course, and Terry's sitting here. Not to speak for the governor, as y'all have seen in the news, of course, and Terry's sitting here beside me, is the car tax is one of the big things that's up, up for right now. And it's a very political hot topic. So we'll let the governor deal with that. Number four on the county administrative report is, is FYI to the, the board members for the state and local economic interests and financial disclosure statements. And before your training for the board members, the new board members and the old board members. Next on.
What is the deadline on that?
On the court?
The, the financial disclosure.
I think that is February 1st.
February 1st.
February 1st, it's being the February 1st.
It didn't even January though.
Yes, yes.
Just get it through Mr. Lester.
Yes, there is a good plan. Yes. Next on the county administrative reports is the Lebanon Fire Department. This is the Russell County Courthouse Fire Chief's report. This is recommendations that's in regards to the new construction in the new Russell County courthouse. Of course, the Lebanon Fire Department, you know, is fully capable of doing what we call life safety analysis, to make sure that everything works and everybody egress and ingress. They can make sure that we have a fire safety, life safety plan in place in case something happens, either during operations or during closing. So they, as far as our life safety plan, everything was approved by the, not just the fire department, but our building inspectors and also the fire marshals. So we do have a few pieces of equipment that would want to be bought from external, not in the building, because the building has all the equipment that it needs. And what we're looking for is basically hookups on the outside for all the fire departments can hit all three sides simultaneously. So we're going to be looking at equipment for that. Next is the normal BDOT monthly road system report. So we're going to be dependent upon that since now that we have no highway safety. So, so if you have, it's not to be facetious, but anything that y'all have, I'm from BDOT, so I have 10 years. So we have a good working relationship with them. And, and Terry and I, we're sitting here discussing, and a majority of the time, they will call you. If they have a road problem, a lot of times, they will call the board as they perhaps individually in your area. But oftentimes, if you don't, if you, if you want us to handle it, we'll be glad to. If, as time goes on, the ones that's been here a while, they, they've also, they've got BDOT pretty well on speed dial, don't you think, but? So we'll, you'll get acclimated for all of that. So one of the biggest things that you'll see and get calls from is roads, animal control, and disposal. So that's, that's the three. So that's, that's what we get. Down to the motions that we need. The first one up, and I hate to say, but we have to do it by code, is the Russell County Six-Year General Reassessment for Real Estate. So this is our sixth year, I hate to say that, but boy, it went by fast then. So this is required by code of Virginia. I need a motion and approval for the advertisement for the request for proposals from General Reassessment Services for Russell County.
So we have a motion for Mr. Hens, or Mr. Kaiser.
Second.
For Ms. Wallace.
Discussion, please.
Good discussion.
I've got a question on this. I mean, while I've been on this board, we've had, I know one horror thing, reassessment, that people came in and prices of their homes and stuff was evaluated, you know, and they had to meet with certain ones to get that fixed. Are we going to hire, can we hire somebody internally to do this, or does it have to be an outside source? Because most of the people outside the area, they don't know the, the people that they're dealing with.
We can, we, we have an assessor's office, but you have, you can hire some, an assessor that's in the county, yes, you, you can handle that. But you do have to hire someone to assess it by code. So, yeah. A lot of larger municipalities and cities like Fredericksburg, Frederick, Alexandria, they have a qualified system that's in place where you have an annual reassessment internally and it's on a continuous basis. We are on a six-year rotation, so there's so much time that's between assessments that it takes a professional certified assessor to be able to do what will require by the department of tax, because they come through and they, what we turn in from the contractor and goes through the commissioner revenues offices, verified by the department of tax, to make sure that we're in align with the assessments. Of all general counties, they come in and look, and they look at all the assessments, but the adjourning counties, but also they look at comps within your own county.
No, I think I'm saying, people are really struggling right now. I hate to see an increase on people's assessments. If, you know, I, I know we don't have a lot of control over that, I understand. But just for the, the purpose of trying to keep it low and trying to keep it settled in here for our citizens, I worry about it. I worry about anything like that, that the assessments would go up and that thing.
I, I agree with you, but the thing of it is, it is what it is.
I understand.
It's not a lot we can really do about it. But people that have their own departments are usually heavily populated areas, they have a lot of change every year. The reason we can get by with just finding periodically is because we're a little bit changed.
I understand.
I'd like to see that change, but most rural areas are like that. You just can't afford to find this stuff every year.
Oh, I understand.
But.
Before we scare everybody here, this reassessment can happen and your home price value could double for the past six years. So we can adjust the tax rate down so that your taxes won't go up.
Yeah.
So everybody watching that tonight, whenever you watch it, everybody sitting here, don't get worried your taxes is going to go through the roof. We're here to adjust the rate down so that you'll be okay during this reassessment.
I'll, I'll piggyback on that. There is a state statute law that even if your taxes went up, it can go only up 1%.
1% on the overall tax from what the total tax was.
Thank you.
It's not going to be one of those things like the personal property tax you saw a couple of years ago. It's not going to be like that. We are not going to have that happen in Russell County again, as long as I'm still on this board anyway. But it'll be, my goal, like Andrew says, is to keep things level funded, level, level taxation. That way folks aren't hit at a time when the economy is in the tank and we're struggling, when you get business in here, when you get jobs, when you get the economy rolling. We can't afford to go and lay more burden on the taxpayer.
I agree. And one of the things you've got to remember, this is just a year of assessment. So of course, there's the equalization board that's in there too, and, and the board avoids those. So those are things that triggers and mechanisms that's in place, and it's hard to tell what the economy do. So I need a motion and approval for the Six-Year General Reassessment, or a request for proposal contract.
I'll make a motion.
I need a motion to allow Mr. Lester to advertise, say.
You are the next.
That was a discussion.
Okay, thank you, Ed, drive. Sorry, I missed that name.
Sorry, we're in discussion.
That's my motion, Dave. That's my motion.
Sorry, Nate.
Have we beat this? Any more discussion? If not, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of allowing Mr. Lester to do this, signify the same eye.
Aye.
All opposed? There are none.
Now, the second part of the county administrative request is, of course, the Eagle View, the county wide pictometry contract for the fly services. That's in conjunction with the general assessment. And why we do that is they, we don't have to do the flyovers every year. What, based off of the one flyover that we do this year, we do it in conjunction with flyovers, so we're not doing house visits and house visits. That's when the assessment gets very expensive. If we had to visit 11,326 houses and assess it, they wouldn't, the contract would be astronomical. So we're using the technology of today, just like you will find on Zillow and Rest. We're using that technology in combination. Now, one thing that we do get to keep with this is, once we do it, is it will upgrade our 911 system and photos, but it also upgrades our GIS and our property for appraisals for real estate. So, you know, that's up to y'all, whether y'all want to open it to it. It was in the package on, on disasters and what all we're going to upgrade on this system. So it does a multiple of things, not just a reassessment. So it could be very beneficial. But I need a motion for approval for the Eagle View County Wide Pictometry Contract for Fly Services.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer that motion tonight, please.
Motion, Ms. Wallace, second.
Second.
Motion is to angry instantly. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Lester, you've touched on this, this, the Eagle View. Will we be able to use this system or the gathering of information that we'll be able to plug that into our EMS, our emergency management system and our fire departments and our rescues that we've been talking about for some years, about locations of working fire hydrants and this sort of thing? I'm just wondering, is, is that getting way down the weeds?
As you, no, as you've seen in the scope of services, it had a disaster plan planning. And we can combine with our, take our shape files that come out of pictometry and be able to move it not just to the GIS, but also into our, our 911. Also, as you've seen there, it doesn't have, we can also share it one with other departments, which, you know, not just our 911, but we can also work with, Katie, you here?
No.
Katie and I are also working on trying to get the deeds pulled in right with our systems. And this will be part of that, that combination of services that we can do and have it online. So between the 911 and emergency services, the upgrade of the GIS and of the deeds, this should all come about and be one system. As you've seen also on there, it has no, as far as the countywide, it doesn't have a limit, it doesn't have a set amount of users in it, which we had to pay for licensing on. We, we work, I negotiated that out because that also gives board members access to it. Because a lot of times, when you're running that road that you get that call on, you've got nowhere it's at. So, and you, it, it can query it. It has a lot, a lot of advantages, and it also has one component in this year that's never had, if you want to attend, which I will have on the departments, is training.
So to continue this discussion, just one more minute, please, bear with me. So we will be able to get this system in place that will be user-friendly, and those that are in, using this for their jobs, the real estate agencies, attorneys, everybody else that works in this, this will upgrade this system because it's in really bad shape right now.
It's in bad shape. And, and it's not due to, again, we, we have an opportunity while we're upgrading. And it's not that we don't do the work. Our, our records are antiquated, and it's almost like the bylaws. This is the one time, because over the years, this board was so conservative, we didn't do multiple flyovers. We did the one that we had to do, and we cut the contract. That was it. We did not want to spend the money to do it. But now, while we have to do this by code, then let's get the bug for the bank, bang for the bug. But also, technology has changed over six years. What we were getting six years ago seems very antiquated to what the technology that we can pull out right now.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. I'm through with the discussion at this time. Y'all has that little chair.
One thing is, I'm reading this right, there's three flyovers, the three adjustments over the course of six years, is that right?
That is correct. We put that in there, we have to do the one in 24 along with the reassessment. That, that gives us an evaluation. So what we were doing between the assessments, we went in 2018, then we went to 20, you know, 2019, then we went to 23. We were evaluating six years apart. So what, the contract that initiated was in 24, skip a year, go to 26, skip a year, and hit the other one. That way we're not hitting such a span. The reason I do that, if we were just doing a reassessment, I would go from the first year to the sixth year again. But if you're going to keep your GIS and your EMS and the rest of your records, I have to have, by code, we have to have a more updated shape files on record to be able to, to communicate, have monitoring agreements, and mutual aid agreements with other counties in the state. Now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, signify the same eye.
Aye.
All opposed, like same. There are none.
Thank you, Chairman. Next on the county administrative reports is, okay, here's where we get to, into the grants. This is the IDA Commonwealth Development Opportunity Performance Grant and Agreement for the Tate Corporation, which is what we call the Bush Bill. At the last board meeting, you had the tobacco grant. This is the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund for $700,000. I need a motion for the approval of the IDA Opportunity Fund Grant for $700,000.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion? Not all in favor of this motion, signify the same eye. All opposed? There are none.
Next on the county administrative request is the Community Development Block Grant, 2121-14. The Dade Regional Sewer Line Extension Project for supplemental funding, also another million dollar grant, for a total of $3.5 billion in grant funding.
I would be happy to offer that motion. Thank you very much.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Motion in second, discussion? If not, all in favor of this second. Motion signify the same eye.
Aye.
All opposed, like same.
Thank you, Chairman. Next is the Department of, this is the Criminal Justice Services. This is a V Stop Grant for continuation and new advocates for $133,033. Yeah, $133,333. This is for equipment and awards. Now, in this grant is $33,000 that is county-funded. Out of the 133, the local match is $33,333 for a total of $133,333 for a total. That has to be awarded by the county. Need a move, motion approval?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? This is, is this one that we generally do most years?
This is the V Stop. This is very important.
All in favor of this motion, signify the same eye.
Aye.
All opposed, like same.
Just to elaborate, the V Stop, this is, this is to increase apprehension, prosecution, adjudication of persons committing violent crimes against women. That's what the V Stop means. I apologize for the acronym, so. Next, the, on the county administrative request is a approval for the Russell County Disposal Truck Purchase Replacement for $215,212.
So moved.
Need a second for discussion?
I'll make the second.
Okay, in a second. Now, Ms. Lester, you need to explain about this rotating these vehicles out, how you make money on them.
Do we have to tell that?
Yeah.
Okay. Under our total program, we, we have disposal trucks that we purchase on state contract. We use the purchasing power and piggy bank up on our state, and we also do federal contracts too, but we use them like the state. Just for example, what we do in our disposal trucks, we buy them upfront on a state contract at a very reduced discount. And we run them up to a certain percentile and, and mileage for a couple of years. It's equivalent to about two years, and then we turn them back in and trade them. You go, well, why do you do that? Why don't you run it? Because what we do with those, we buy at a huge discount. We also have a guaranteed minimum price contract to buy those back when we're done. So what we end up doing is, we buy a truck like we have paid for, the last one that we, and it's in their analysis too. We paid like 180, we sold it to 205, and we ran it for two years. We get such hard, large discounts because we can run them on state contracts. For example, on this contract, on this one truck that was $215,212, our discount was $47,327. twenty-seven dollars. See, you can't buy it on the street like that, so, I, I mean, I'd like to buy ten trucks and just sell trucks, I think I could do pretty good at it, but, but we can't do that. But, not to be facetious, not to be facetious, what we keep in line and what we can run, and based off our depreciation, other than the fuel cost, we, we really are running our trucks for nothing. And, and we keep it very firm on that, and we have been since the beginning. A lot of the people did not understand that.
You did an analysis of the average cost versus...
Yes, and it's in each one of the board packets.
But it's, with, with the trading, it's, it's a negative.
So, I need a, again, we run them, we'd be glad to show anybody this, and we also do the same thing with our, our search vehicles and stuff, we run them to the least, run them to the max, and, because anybody that knows, I'm telling you right now, if you run them, by the time you get through five years of service, if you sell it, you will not get any payback, but we've got a program in place, we earn more than keep, we keep good trucks and keep our employees safe. So, I need approval for five hundred and fifteen, two twelve, on the, uh, disposal truck purchases.
Two fifteen, fifteen.
Two fifteen, five, oh, yes, huh? Okay.
We're not giving you five fifteen.
Two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars.
And, uh, for clarification, that includes the truck in the bed?
In the hoist, yes.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, signify the same eye. All opposed, white sign.
Next on the county administrator request is the Law Enforcement, uh, L O L E Grant, this is for twenty-five hundred and twelve dollars. This is a federal grant, fully funded, for, um, for law enforcement, equipment and training.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, discussion? Is there anything specific that this has to be allocated to, or is it up to?
Equipment and training.
Any, any further discussion? Not all in favor of this motion, signify the same eye. All opposed, white sign.
Next on the county administrator request is the, uh, the CSA supplemental allocation request form for a hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-two cents. This is our mandatory services that we have through the department and, uh, Department of Social Services, this is, uh, for the Treatment Center of Foster Care for our children. Um, I have spoken with the CSA director, you know, coordinator, and the hundred and sixteen thousand is, is a, is an estimate, where she, she, Alice is saying out there, she knows what we're referring to, and, um, this is an estimate, estimate for approval for the end of the year, just to make sure that we've got enough to cover it, and these are mandatory services.
This will be, this is basically a budget adjustment.
That is correct, for a hundred and sixteen thousand, one ninety-one, ninety-two, so.
If it comes in less than that.
If it comes in less than that, then we...
No, no.
If it does, yes.
I'm not, I have no doubt in it.
Do you want to hear the other side of the question?
I'll make, I'll make that motion for the CSA supplemental allocation.
Have a motion, have a second.
Thank you.
Any discussion, questions, whatever, this, this one?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Eaton.
Go ahead.
Um, so, the, the budget adjustment, help me out to understand this, was this an over expenditure by the department?
Based off of what we have right now, and then the kids that we have in the treatment programs, this is an estimate to take us to May thirty-first. We have to set this in by law, so that way we can keep reimbursement and cash flows coming in. That, we don't, this is an estimate based off the current services, so we're estimating out to the May thirty-first, of twenty-four on this. Now, if it comes in less, like Mr. Breeding said, then we get to keep it, but if it comes in more, the CSA will be coming back to us to...
In that.
But it will be the real cost, it will be mandatory cost, it is required by law.
Because of the way their budget falls, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That is correct, see, their, their budget is from June first to May thirty-first, it's not on the fiscal year, so they're, they're moving on the end of the year already.
Explain why this, just over budget to children.
Some of the kids that we have in care.
Yeah.
We're in the red now, so we give this money to take the bills.
One child is ten thousand a month.
One of the things I want to say, that I told Chairman Breeding, and I've talked to county administrator, uh, it was a real big passion of mine when I first got elected, and we started mountain movers and working on the foster care program, housing, whatever it takes, but, we're, we're in a pandemic, I'm telling you. And if we don't get people locally in Russell County to try to pick it up and help take a child, uh, you know, I've talked to Tara about it, I mean, we, we lost the director of fostering, and I, I was chapped over that, because I was working with Regina and a foster family, and we were visiting different churches as much as we could, talking to them about breaking the cycle and getting these kids in a good environment. And I plan on cranking that back up again, and I want to work with our church coalition, our pastors and stuff, to try to help meet this need. I mean, we're what, at a hundred and thirty-seven? Is it a hundred and thirty-seven kids?
Between programs, CSA program.
No, last count, we probably had seventy-two.
Seventy-two. At one time, when we, we started the program, went from a hundred and one down to forty-eight, and we had a lot, I went to Willie Scott's church, and there was five families, said, yeah, we'll take kids. We didn't know, and if they don't know, they don't know how to help us to meet those needs, and I know we have some pastors here that has been working on homes, like foster care homes, and, and we have got to do that. We wouldn't have had to come up with this money if we'd have, if we had have thought forward and, and got ahead of this thing and fixed this issue, uh, we would have had these accommodations and stuff, and I, I want to work with anybody interested, and any families out there that would be interested in taking a child, I would ask that you pray about it and see if that might be something you want to do.
A lot of us can't go into foster care homes.
Oh, I know. I understand.
They have to go into therapeutic.
I understand. Yeah, some of them have to go into therapeutic.
Yeah, but, but I understood one of the issues was, we only have one foster under approval.
Yes, that's correct.
So, there was, there was a lapse in getting these things approved, I think we've got more than that approved now. Russ, we really need to work on that, and I think it's, we got, I mean, the first, we mean, we sat in on this, we were all elected here, they came out to a hundred, it was a hundred and sixteen thousand, something like, for this same issue. So, and that's when Javid jumped on it, started going around all the churches, and I mean, it was, so we're going to have to do that.
I'm willing to work with the board or whoever, and I've talked to Tara about it, I mean, there's going to have to be initiatives, and we're going to have to work with our partners and our community to help us address this issue, these kids are troubled kids, Sandy knows, and you all know, I mean, we've got...
Not to mention your social services employees are being overworked and not paid overtime.
That's right, that's right. And then we're having to house them there at the social services building.
Any further discussion? If not, I want to ask for a vote. All in favor of this motion, signify the same eye. All opposed, white sign.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item on the county administrator request, it was the St. Paul Fire Department, y'all already moved on their resolution. So, um, the last one being the Holacre was on the last agenda for the November, I mean, the December board, so the Holacre and Castlewood canary is what y'all want to do with, uh, the operations on it, so right now, they're still open, so for you as such, with other county citizens, so, do y'all want to...
Are they getting a lot of use on it?
Well, right now, yeah, they're slowing down, and, but right now, it's the meat.
But you know, it's now hogging.
So, usually, we go to the middle of January, we did last year, so it was about the third week of January, about the twenty, twenty-first, twenty-second, somewhere near there. Because if you don't, then some, you'll get a call from one of the farmers, and, oh, yeah. It's like the road gum.
So, you don't need any action, huh?
No, uh, we'll take it up at the first, and, or just, as it kee, as it goes down, I'll just, we'll just start the, uh, we'll start the winterization of them.
Can we go ahead and publicize that the canary will be shut down?
By the end of the month?
Potentially be shut down.
By the end of the month? Okay, I can do that.
And like, anybody that's got anything, if you want to get canned up, they can go ahead and do it.
All right. We can do it. Sir, that concludes, yes, sir.
Okay, now, I'll come down to the last item, which is board discussions and adjournments, where everybody gets an opportunity to say something, so I'm going to start down on the end with the most conservative man in Russell County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and, uh, keep sending your prayers, there's a lot going on with us newly elected folks, kind of jumped into something, then we got hit with all kinds of stuff from different directions that was maybe a little unexpected, that, uh, we didn't, we didn't expect for it to be easy. Appreciate everybody coming out and voicing your opinions, and, uh, hopefully we can get some of these bylaws changed, and we can have a little more interaction with you all, and, uh, maybe that'll make things go a little smoother and add to the transparency that we'd like to see go forward on this board. Thank you for coming out.
Ms. Wallace.
I'm not used to going in this, in this direction right now, but anyway, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and, um, I'm, I'm excited and looking forward to the many different things coming, and thank you to the new board members, thank you to Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you've, you've got your seat, so we'll move forward with that. Thank you again.
I want to echo what Andrew says, thank you all for coming out, and, you know, like he said, we got hit with a lot of things that were unexpected, but we're going to work hard for you guys, we're going to do our best. And the transparency issue, like I've said through my whole campaign, like Andrew just said, we want to make sure that you all know what we're doing, why we're doing it, and, you know, it would be wonderful to be able to answer questions. I know me and Steve and David have talked endlessly, uh, before I ever even ran, about how frustrating it is to sit up here and not be able to answer questions, and I don't want to do that, and, so, I look forward to changing that, but thanks again for coming.
Mr. Green?
Yes, I've got just a couple of things, I got a call today from Logan Ball on Huffman Hill. I know the governor just awarded us a grant, uh, for the PSA to build water down the Tiller Trail part, and I would like for us to have a discussion with him, I talked to Joe Huff today that's on that board. Uh, Logan Ball has no water, and he lives on Huffman Hill. If he runs his dishwasher, he can't run anything else, because he just absolutely doesn't have any water, and I talked to Joe today about maybe seeing legally if we could take that money and wherever we cut across there to go toward Tiller, if we could maybe get in the middle somewhere.
There's already water line down there.
There's water line down there.
All they have to do is tap into it and go up.
Okay, well, Joe, Joe apparently didn't know that, but he thought it was on the other side of the road.
I was actually working.
Okay. Well, I would like to see, uh, Logan be able to get water, uh, there and some of those residents that, I mean, water tables right now are really low. We have a lot of things to work on, and I know this board's going to be a dog on a bone when it comes to going to Richmond and talking to B R A and, and trying to get the appropriations of funding that we need to get to try to get infrastructure into our citizens. So, uh, it's, it's going, it's a job, let me tell you, but we're willing to, to roll up our sleeves and, and work at it, but I just want y'all to say a prayer for us. I mean, that is so critical that we have people praying for us, and, uh, that makes a difference, and, and the decision-making that we make, I just ask that you all pray for us and, and keep us in your prayers, and I'm open, if you need to call me, call me, uh, at any time, and, you know, if I don't know the answer, I'll try to find it and get it back to you, but, uh, I'm like Tara and, and some of the rest, I want more transparency, and for us to be able to have communication dialogue. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mike, thanks.
Mr. Kazin?
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and all the ones that got up and spoke, uh, I wanted to let you know that your, uh, your concerns are heard, um, I think they're legitimate concerns, and I think they need to be addressed. I've said from the very beginning, um, since I started attending board meetings years ago, that transparency is one of the biggest lacking things we have in government, and I want to bring that to government, and that's one thing that not just Ms. Di has requested from the landfill group with myself as well, because I don't have all the answers. I've got a lot of questions still, and so I've asked them, just like Steve said and Tara said, to come out, rent out the government center to present their plan, answer all and any questions, uh, and they volunteered to take, uh, tours over to the landfill site that they're proposing, um, and I think it's, uh, it's really important that we all get these questions answered for what's going on. There's most likely going to be a lot of legal things that we have to go through as far as a board, to find out what we can and cannot do, and where our restrictions are. Uh, like I said, I don't have all the answers, but, um, I want you to know that we have already, or we're working toward getting more transparency on the landfill issue, and we will see, you know, and you, hopefully you'll be able to get your answers, your, your questions answered by that group when they come in, so, um, just want to let you know that we're, we're working for you already in that respect, okay? And we're only on day two of January, so we're working, working hard for you, okay? So, if you need anything, give us a shout, and, uh, appreciate y'all coming out tonight.
I'll just take on what the other board members said, we appreciate everybody coming out, and, and I'll say it again, transparency, we're going to really work, we're trying to be able to communicate with you guys, and it's a two-way street, you understand, we don't always have all the answers, sometimes the answers are not the ones you want to hear, but it's the ones that we know, but, communication back and forth, if we work together, we can get a lot of conversation, so, uh, Ted, I'll just, I'll just leave, and I want to, to, as far as the adjournments, we need to adjourn to reconvene January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, at the fourteenth, at the Hilton, Hilton Hotel. Somebody would make that motion.
I'll make it.
Second.
Have a second, discussion? Not all in favor of that motion, signify the same eye. Opposed, there aren't any?